Good evening. It is January 20, 2022, 6:03 PM. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording? Seeing none, I will note for the record that the members of the Select Board participating this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes, and I believe we have before us the minutes of January 4th. Bill, are you prepared to proceed?
I am.
And Liz?
Yes.
Okay, so I understand that Liz has submitted a very minor change that I'm comfortable with, so I am prepared to accept the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 4, 2022.
As amended? That the motion would be to approve them as amended. Is that correct?
Well, I haven't seen the amended minutes. Have amended minutes been submitted?
No. Liz, do you want to just tell us what the amendment is?
Sure. It was just one line, Bill, related to Emily Wentworth's presentation where... Let me see if I can find it here. It says, "Ms. Klein asked if Ms. Wentworth has found any efficiencies related to holding remote meetings, and I added, 'and automating processes due to COVID that we should continue in the future.'" That was the only change.
As amended. Sounds good.
Okay, we have before a motion that's seconded to approve the minutes as amended. Roll call, vote. Liz? Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider amending the vote regarding the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for New Year's bonfire at Weir River Farm by changing the date from January 9, 2022 with a rain-snow date of January 15, 2022 to February 12, 2022 with a rain-snow date of February 19, 2022 from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Is Michael with us?
Like he's not.
Tom or Michelle, were you expecting him to be here?
I don't think so. The Board had previously approved this recently, and it was just the date change that he was hoping to move everything to.
Yeah, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary here, and I was comfortable with the change. Tom, do you know if this has been reviewed by our Police Department, if they have any concerns?
They have no concerns.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Do we know what happened? Was it canceled because of rain?
Good question.
Yes. I think, you know, I'm so I was planning, I'm gonna speculate here, but that was the weekend of the snow.
Okay.
And I drove out there that weekend. That's our lot of snow out there, and I think it was tough to get to the site because of the snow.
Okay.
But I think it might have been canceled because of snow-related issues, but that's purely speculation on my part.
Yeah, it makes sense. Right.
Okay. I'm comfortable with it.
Bill, any questions?
No, no issues.
You've just answered the questions. Any member of the public with comments or question? I see none, so I am prepared to accept the motion here.
I will make a motion to amend the vote regarding the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for New Year's bonfire at Weir River Farm by changing the date from January 9, 2022 with a rain-snow date of January 15, 2022 to February 12, 2022 with a rain-snow date of February 19, 2022 from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We do a roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you, and I assume Michael will be informed so we can let him know.
Yeah, we'll talk to him tomorrow.
Okay, next item on our agenda would be the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles for Discussion, and Tom, if you could lead us in that discussion, and I will note that the first article, Article A, I believe that Bill will be recusing himself from that discussion. Is that correct, Bill?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, so Tom, if you can start with Article A, please.
Sure, happy to. Yep. So the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund, this is annually the first article on the Town Meeting Warrant, and it allows us to appoint a, it's a rotating appointment. Every three years, we need to add a, we need to appoint a new person to that Board. Often, it's the same people that express interest, and they simply get renewed for a new three-year term. This year's designee is Laura Boyle. We have reached out to her. She is excited and willing to continue to serve in this capacity. Their responsibility for the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund distributions is to distribute proceeds from a modest account set up a long time ago by Hannah Lincoln Whiting's descendants, and it's for those designated as in need that live in South Hingham. And then the trustees of the Bathing Beach are elected at Town Meeting and through this process, and they do serve for an indeterminate tenure. And this vacancy is a result of a resignation of a trustee. Chris Daly recently resigned, and the designated person for filling that vacancy is Adrian Ramsey.
Okay. Liz, do you have any questions on Article A?
I do not.
And neither do I. Is there any member of the public with questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion on Article A noting that Bill Ramsey will be recusing himself from the vote.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article A.
I'll second that. Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And Bill, are you abstaining?
Abstention, yes. Thank you.
Abstention is noted for the record. Thank you. Tom, next one.
Sure. So the next article, Article B, this is to assume, to allow the town to assume liability for the Department of the State's Department of Conservation work that, for any damage that may result from work that the DCR does in town. It's a requirement of their work.
And again, this is something that the town has done every year, at least since I've been a resident.
That's right.
Liz, any questions?
So just one question. So is all the work done by DCR, or are there instances where our DPW would actually do the work?
Tom, I think the answer is that there are instances where our DPW would do work, but this article only applies to work that the DCR is performing.
Okay, understood.
Any other questions? Liz?
No other questions. Thank you.
Bill?
I have none. No, thank you.
So I'm prepared to accept a motion on Article B.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article B.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved. Next one, please.
Thank you. Sure. So Article C, this is the Committee Reports, the annual, the article that allows the town to accept the annual report of Town Meeting-formed Committees. It's a report, frankly, that has the report of, I think, very close to all of our town boards and committees in it. That also includes all the Town Meeting Committee Reports that are required under this article, but this is an annual article, and it's submitted every year for Town Meeting approval.
So Tom, when we had this presentation, I forget if it was Tuesday or last week, I asked someone to double-check to make sure we had the right committees and boards listed here. Has someone done that? Are we confident that this is the correct list?
I am confident that this is the correct list.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
None.
Members of the public, hearing none, I'll accept the motion on Article C.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article C.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved. What is our next article?
Our next article is Article G. This is the transfer from the Stabilization Fund. I would respectfully ask that the Board consider postponing action on this article to a future date. I think that Michelle and I would like to do a little bit more research on the Stabilization Fund and its requirements and what it may or may not be able to be used for. We want to make sure we're maximizing the benefit from that resource.
So Tom, you and I have discussed this, and I am in agreement. We should get the benefit of your further research before we do a vote on Article G, so I am not going to call for a vote on Article G, and we are going to move forward to the next article.
Okay, Article H is the dispersment of the Electric Light Department receipts. This is the annual article that allows the town to collect a payment in lieu of taxes from the Hingham Municipal Light Plant. This is intended to be a payment that would cover the amount of money that they would otherwise pay if they were a tax, if not a tax-exempt entity from the town. So they are, and we have this pilot program in place to allow the town to realize that value. It is formulaic, and it is set at a minimum amount not to drop below $450,000. Generally, the town realizes close to $500,000.
Liz, any questions?
So there's a minimum but not a maximum. Is that right?
That's right. Yep. Yeah, we'll take as much as there, as much as we can get.
No questions. Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
So I had a follow-up discussion with Laura Burns on this, because I was wondering why the dollar amount didn't keep going up every year as inflation and more businesses are using electricity, and the answer is that, well, we have maybe increased costs and more businesses and residents, they've been using, town residents and businesses are being more energy-conservative. They're taking steps to make sure that we are moving in the right direction in terms of efficiency, so that results in a reduction in the revenue that the light plant would be collecting compared to the increase that I was expecting. So that's why I think, Tom, your number is correct, that it's been averaging around the 450, 500 each year.
Yep.
Any member of the public with questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion on Article H.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article H.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved. Next one, Mr.?
The next one is the Building Department Revolving Fund. We do have our Building Commissioner, Mr. Clancy, is here this evening if there are questions, but I can generally explain that what we're doing, and this is consistent with what we've done for several years, we are allowing the community to spend up to, not a minimum, up to $350,000 from the Building Department Revolving Fund that is specifically intended to, these are revenues raised from plumbing, gas, and electric work inspections and fees and the like, and so they need to, the revolving funds need to be spent on work performed to that end, and as a result, we are offsetting the salaries of our plumbing, gas, and electrical inspectors plus 50% of the salaries of the two administrative assistants in that office, as well as 50% of the salary of the Building Commissioner, of Mike's salary. We also are offsetting costs as we can from part-time inspectors and some miscellaneous expenses, including trucks for the inspectors, fuel costs, office supplies, et cetera. And this is, like I said, an amount not to exceed $350,000, and the revolving fund will be able to support that level of spending.
Thank you. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope. Tom did put it out there. He did a great job with it. Again, it's what the fees that bring in for the plumbing, electrical, and gas fees and everybody, as far as their expenses and payroll would come out of that $350,000.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yeah, so Tom, so the article just allows us to pay those fees directly out of the, those payroll amounts directly out of the fees. Is that correct?
Yeah, process-wise, Michelle, I assume we transfer money from the revolving fund to our general fund for purposes of salary and expenses?
I think so, and there's other, like, uniforms, and we bought vehicles in the past. There's other, it just helps us, it sets kind of the limit for the year that we can use from that fund within the given parameters.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, it's like, it's like, it's like an additional revenue source.
Yeah. Do we have, do we do that for any other department in town?
For Elder Services, their revolving fund, there's always an article for that, too, in general, come probably next week.
Yeah. Well, I know that obviously Mike's department, hardworking, brings in a lot of revenue for the town. What would happen if we ever did not bring in 350?
We would have to, we would use, we would take up to 350 that was available, and then we would augment the rest with available revenue.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Good seeing you, Mike.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Great. So Mike, your department is, brings in the revenue, and we're using these funds actually to pay for the work that brings in the revenue, which is exactly what makes sense here. So I've got no question. Any member of the public have questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion on Article I.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article I.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved. Our next article, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a good night.
You, too. Article L is the acceptance of easements. This article would allow the selectmen to accept easements so that a special town meeting would not be necessary in the event that an easement were needed during the course of the year.
And just to be clear, it authorizes but does not require the Select Board to accept the easement, so if, when we evaluate one, it's not in the town's best interest, we do not have to proceed.
That's exactly right.
But if it is, we can proceed, and we can proceed without the delay that would accompany calling another town meeting.
Yep, that's right. And expenses, there and et cetera.
Yes. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Any member of the public with questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for Article L.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article L.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you, and I believe that concludes our warrant article discussion for this evening. We will not be looking at Article M.
That's right.
Tom, thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of updates to the general bylaws for gender-neutral changes. I believe members of the Select Board received the proposed revised general bylaws today. I have gone through it, but not completely, and I want to make sure that my fellow members of the Select Board have their time and chance to review it. So Bill, are you prepared to proceed, or do you want more time to review?
You know, I haven't looked at them, Joe. I know that you and John Cofflin have looked at them, and I think, I think Daveline Cooper have as well, so very confident in the work you've done, but I'd like to take a quick look at it as well. So I'd like to take, I'd like to maybe take the weekend.
Yes, it'll be great reading over the weekend.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure.
Liz?
Agreed. I'd like a little more time to look at it. Thank you.
Yes, I, so we are agreed, so we will defer the discussion, but Tom, if you could just very briefly explain the background, which is, you know, the last town meeting, the vote, and why this is before us now?
Yeah, exactly. A town meeting authorized us, the town, or actually ordered the town to update its bylaws so that it reflected some gender-neutral language in large part, and perhaps the most glaring place where that change will be noticed is that this Board is no longer the Board of Selectmen. They are now, you are now the Select Board. So those types of changes, that language needs to be, you're the lawyer, Joe, was promulgated throughout the, throughout the bylaws, I believe, right? Is that the right term? So we need to go through them. We need to make those changes, a lot of pronoun changes, things like that throughout all of our bylaws.
And I believe that the annual town meeting last year not only required us to do it, but there's specific language that was included in the approved vote that, I believe, is incorporated in what is before us, so we will be taking the time to make sure that there are no inadvertent errors, and we should schedule this for our upcoming meeting this coming Tuesday.
Sounds good.
Okay. And with that, our next item on the agenda is, Tom, your COVID-19 update.
Thank you.
And I will, before you do, just, I've been hearing folks saying we should be changing it from COVID-19 to COVID-22 since we're now in 2022, but it is still COVID-19.
That's exactly right. I don't want to know when that's going to end.
Okay.
Sometime soon, I hope. So the COVID-19 report for today, January 20th, is as follows. The Massachusetts DPH data through January 19th shows that the state's seven-day average of confirmed cases was 9,403, which is down significantly from a peak of 23,000. And regarding local data, the town has not been, has not reported new data since the last cycle, and that was provided in Tuesday's report, so I do not have an update on new town data over the last two days. Regarding the testing site, I will reread some of what I said on Tuesday. The Hingham, we do continue to operate a regional COVID-19 drive-through testing site that is being done in partnership with Cohasset, Hull, and Situate, and is being held at 335 Lincoln Street. On January 19th, actually, the vendor reported completing 95 tests at the site, and the vendor has also reported 297 reservations for tests set for the next two days. So the site is getting, is getting, I think, some good use, and it sounds like the public is utilizing the site appropriately, so that's good. We are working with the vendor to improve turnaround times for PCR test results, and the testing center will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Both PCR and rapid antibody tests are available. Rapid antigen tests are not available at this time. There is a PCR test available for, at no cost, to the patient. Some residents, or excuse me, residents and employees of the four communities will continue to have priority appointment access from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. I'll say that again. Residents and employees of the four communities will continue to have priority appointment access from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM daily. Online pre-registration is required. No test will be administered without an appointment, and all participants will be notified of test results by email. Some public health protocols, I dislike reiterating this, I think it's helpful. Please continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others. As we all know, vaccination, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, and frequently washing hands, among other measures, will help protect all of us from COVID-19. And also, lastly, on January 7th, 2022, the Hingham Board of Health did issue a health advisory strongly recommending the use of face coverings by all patrons, visitors, and employees within any indoor space that's open to the public in Hingham. So that's what I have, Joe.
Any questions on the COVID-19 report? Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions. Thank you.
And for myself, just adding that in addition to the testing site, I believe that testing is continuing, continuing to be offered by CVS, other drugstores, although I can't speak to the wait times associated with them, but we are an important option, but not the only option for Hingham residents. Any member of the public with questions or comments? Seeing none, we move to the next item, which is appointments, and Bill, do you have an appointment that you would like to offer at this time?
I do. I'd make a motion to appoint Sarah Smithson to the Council on Aging to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved, and Bill, thank you for this. I see that Sarah submitted her application back on November 23rd, and I believe she's very qualified, so thank you for moving forward with this. Next, we will consider public comments on items not on the agenda. If there are members of the public who have comments on items not on the agenda, now is your time. Seeing none, I will move to the Town Administrator and Board Reports. Mr. Vail?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to thank all of the boards and committees and the One Citizen request, that Citizen petition article that we received. Today was the deadline for receipt of articles for the annual town meeting to be held at the end of April, and I just want to thank everybody. It takes a lot of work and a lot of effort to get those articles put together, so thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing. Thank you.
And Art?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
I just wanted to note that I attended the Affordable Housing Trust meeting last evening, and I was so impressed with that group, the Chair, Amy Farrell, the, all of the volunteers, as well as, I know Art has been doing a tremendous amount of work to support them, Emily Wentworth, Michael Severa, on the Zoom, you know, way past 10 o'clock. Their commitment to creating housing opportunities in Hingham is really remarkable, so thank you to them. I just want everyone to know how hard they're working behind the scenes, for sure. That's it.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I have one, one quick thing to put out. Tomorrow is Jack Ramsey's 11th birthday, and he's watching this meeting with his brother and sister upstairs right now, so happy birthday, Jack.
Happy birthday, Jack.
Happy birthday, Jack.
You can't see me right now, because my video's not working, but I know you're watching this meeting, so happy birthday, buddy.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
And like Liz, I just want to report on my committee work last night. I was at the Board of Trustees for the library meeting. Lucy Hancock is just doing an exceptional job, and the trustees are all so committed and dedicated to the library. It's very impressive, and I'm glad to be a part of that group. And with that, before I adjourn, Julie was on here, but I didn't, she's now gone, so that I will take- so that I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, we are adjourned. Look forward to seeing everyone next Tuesday.
All right, everybody, happy birthday, Jack.